To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, August 19th, meeting of the Board of Alderman. The first order of business is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? We'll just move the executive session to the end, but we have no additions and deletions, so we'll move on to amendment and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the August 5th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Are there any corrections, changes to the minutes? Seeing nothing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public comment, are there any members of the public here to address the board on matters not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Good evening. We've got a longer list tonight, so I'm glad there's no public comment. I'm just kidding. Always like public comment. So, before I get into my report tonight, I'd like to talk about someone pretty special of the city of Rutland. Now, I've only been part of the civic engagement process for about four or five years now. But this gentleman has been part of our city for a long time. Alvin has been, most recently, on our city's planning commission and has since retired. And for all of your service, Alvin, I personally want to say thank you very much, as well as I'm sure the board appreciates it. And for that, I will read this following proclamation. Whereas in 1997, Alvin Feigle was nominated and approved to the Board of Ald- by the Board of Alderman as a commissioner of the Rutland City Planning Commission. And whereas Alvin has served as both planning commissioner and a member of the Architectural Review Committee for these past 27 years. And where Alvin has assisted in the rewriting of both the 20- uh, sorry, the 2004 city zoning bylaws and the current city zoning bylaws. And whereas Alvin has generously donated both his time and expertise as a member of the planning commission. And whereas Alvin has tendered his resignation from the commission after 27 amazing years, I, Michael Dundas, Mayor, hereby on behalf of the current and past planning commission members, offer the city's gratitude for the time served on the commission and wish Alvin and his wife Peg good health and happiness into the future. Alvin, thank you very much. Alvin, you'll have to forgive the sub- forgive the subterfuge to get you here tonight. Thank you very much, Peg, for all your effort. And we have a little gift for you. Did you want to say anything?
This was an absolute surprise. She lied to me.
Good job, Peg. Thank you very much, Alvin. We'll get you a copy of this and we appreciate it. And, you know, Alvin, I'll say one more thing, you know, you haven't just been part of civic duty here in Rutland, but you've been a vital member of our community. Many of the buildings around the city have been designed by Alvin and his team over the years, and he's got a good support team at his old business now, and they do a fantastic job for us still. So thank you very much for everything you've done for our community. I really appreciate it. Okay, moving on with the less exciting stuff, but still exciting. I, you know, I've noticed that there's been a bit of energy in the air in Rutland City over the summer. I spend a lot of time talking to visitors and business owners and just, you know, citizens in general. And one of the things, I was talking to this business owner the other day, and one of the things he said to me was, "I had somebody fly here from Massachusetts just to try my food at my restaurant." And I think that kind of speaks volumes. There's been conversation about, you know, is Rutland on the map, right? And you hear conversations locally about, is there enough to do in our city? And then this week, one of our locals actually posted, I don't know if you saw it online, a Facebook post of over 100 things to do in Rutland at any given time. Some of those things that have passed, happened in just the recent past is that we had the fair this week, which was, I think, a phenomenal turnout. I think I read Robert's post, over 10,000 people at the fair on Saturday night alone. That's amazing. And they can tell that from ticket sales, which is great. We had Friday Night Live. Again, great turnout for that, even though we had the fair going on, we were able to still get people for both. National Lineout had its biggest turnout yet, and we're seeing a lot of attention from people and a lot of community activity. And there's a lot of work that goes into these things, and thank you to those who put in all the effort, but also thank you to people for participating, right? Our city is vibrant, and it's alive, and it's exciting, and I'm just really, really grateful for that, and I think it's a fantastic time in our community. Speaking of people visiting our community, Becca Ballant, our representative for the state, came to town, and she had two stops. The first one was at the Housing Authority, where some of the congressionally-directed spending that was appropriated, I think it was the previous year, was handed over in a ceremonial kind of afternoon conversation, which was really nice. The Housing Authority had some electrical troubles with their property. It's something that they needed to get upgraded in order to keep people living there, and in a time of housing where every unit is so important, getting those funds and having those appropriated so that they could keep up on that electrical work was great. And then we went over to Habitat for Humanity, so we went from existing housing to what new housing's looking like. And Rebecca from Habitat for Humanity did a fantastic job touring both the store and the offices and the sites. And we talked about kind of the future of Habitat, how we're going to focus on keeping people in units for- they're going to keep, focus on keeping people in units for about the next year or so, and then look for the next sites to build. If you haven't had the opportunity to go down to Habitat, check out the Restore Store or have a conversation with Rebecca, I really would encourage you to do it. She's a fantastic resource, and now that she's part of our planning commission, even more tightly tied to the city. We had our department head meeting at Brock this morning. What I've been trying to do, we did it every month for a while, and we switched it up to every other month, is take the department heads out to different sites throughout the city and have them hear a little presentation from these different groups that are organized. So we've done Paramount, we did the hub, then this morning was Brock. We had a great conversation with Tom Donahue, who's the executive director over there, and he did a great job reminding us all of the services that they provide to citizens in our city. Everything from weatherization of homes, emergency fuel assistance, emergency shelters in severe weather conditions, and how they bring those resources to our community. So I just wanted to thank Tom and his team at Brock for that support this morning. And something else that happened today, which I thought was really interesting and focuses on the future of our city, is I got the opportunity to go over and evaluate the cohort candidates that will be participating in Startup Rutland's First Generator Accelerator Program. So there are going to be five teams or companies, these are small businesses that are all startups, that are going to end up being the finalists, that will participate, that will be here in Rutland for seven weeks, participating and learning how to grow their startups in this community. Now, our goal while they're here over those seven years is to make Rutland the most attractive place for them to do business so that they stay and grow here. And some of the candidates, man, actually, everybody that we reviewed has some amazing ideas, and to look at, and I know I'm being really vague, and I'm sorry, but you'll hear about all of this at the annual meeting when they get presented, but to look at what these, you know, we're used to seeing small businesses in a certain way in our community in Vermont, whether it's manufacturing or retail outlet, but to look at these creative technologies and how they could be a part of our community is just absolutely incredible. So, again, sorry for the vagueness, but I hope you look forward to finding out more about this as we go. I have a couple of things that I'd like to refer to committee. We have an election coming up in November, so we've got a couple of things that need to go to charter and ordinance, and then a few things that we need to discuss that have some timetables to it. So I'll try to get through this, happy to answer questions, but I'd like to, if we can, keep the larger discussion for those committee meetings if the board so chooses. So the first one is a referral to DPW regarding the discussion of Whale Street Underground Utilities and a potential public-private partnership.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to the Public Works Committee, a discussion of Whale Street Underground Utilities and a potential public-private partnership. It's been seconded, discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Fantastic. The next one is a committee referral. If you remember, back in April, we approved Johnson Controls to evaluate everything in the city and move forward with their environmental review of all these buildings. I have some great news, the reports came back fantastic, I think everybody's going to be really excited. But in order to move to the next step, I checked all the notes. We did not actually leave it in committee, so I need to refer it back. So I'd like to refer the Johnson Controls Environmental, uh, Johnson Controls Report and Next Steps to the Environmental Sustainability Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a request to refer discussion of the Johnson Controls Report and Next Steps to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. It's been seconded, any discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Awesome. All right, another committee referral to Charter and Ordinance. This is for two items, the violation fines and purchasing big bid-trigger amounts in the charter. So I'm gonna, I'll rephrase that motion, but in the charter, there are two things that I think we need to look at. One, and I think you're going to bring something up later, too, if I, by conversations with the treasurer, so I'm leaving that off mine, but one of the things in our charter that's locked into our charter is if we go out to bid for, let's say, we did this a few years ago, to replace the carpet in the downstairs hallway, and it comes in at $3,185. That's a pretty reasonable request to replace that, to replace that carpet. But that $3,000 number is set in charter. There are plenty of things that are $5,000 that we wouldn't need to go out to bid for, stuff that we have vendors that are already our vendors, that already do stuff for us, and every time we tip that line, it ends up creating a lot of work and takes extra time and sometimes ends up being more expensive. So that's the bid-trigger amount, and that's something that is embedded in our charter, so we want to discuss changing that. And the second one is the violation fine. So right now, if you have an ordinance violation, the most we can fine you is up to $500. Well, there's some tools that we're looking at between, you know, what we're doing with the hotels and a couple other things, that actually, some of those are even beyond $500 and would run up against that number. So it's both of those, where they land, we'll discuss in committee, but I just wanted to put it out there for conversation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer violations and fines, as well as the purchasing bid-trigger amounts in the charter, to the Charter and Ordinance Committee. It's been seconded, any discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then one more. So, I want to give an update on the State's General Assistance Program. I think I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago. Back, starting July 1st, a new program took effect, and on July 1st, began a countdown, an 80-80, 80-day countdown. What that means is, if you are anyone in the General Assistance Program, whether you're part of the vulnerable population, disabled, family with children, single, anyone, you only have 80 days' worth of vouchers to use. Once those 80 days run out, you only get back into the program for two reasons, or are able to stay in the hotel, I guess is the better way to say it, for two reasons. One, adverse weather, so temperature drops below a certain amount, or December 1st. Or two, you, it's been a year, and then you get another 80 days. So what this means is that in the next four weeks or so, by mid-September, those 80 days are going to run out. So now we've started having conversations, we're putting together meetings with property owners that have vacant properties that aren't properly boarded up, right? Because having people in a building that's half collapsing is not a safe thing. We're going to be having meetings with the state about the parking garage, because that's a space where a lot of people have been hanging out and how we properly secure it. So we're doing a lot of different things on the city side. One of the things in the discussion with the state, and what we're hearing is, as people are looking to self-resolve, so as people are saying, okay, I no longer have a voucher, I don't have a place to stay, I don't want to camp out on somebody else's property, I want to go home, funds are not available for that. And there's a few programs at the state, and by home, home could be anywhere, you know, throughout Vermont or different locations. For example, the state was able to just get somebody back home to Montana recently, which is where they came from originally. So what I want to talk about is, do we want to try to assist the state in relocation? Part of the reason is, is if we don't have a plan, there's going to be a bit of a challenge with people who don't know how to get back to their resource pool. So it's just, it's a very open-ended discussion, I don't know where the board wants to go, I think it's something that we need to review, you know, we've been having the conversation with AHS and DCF, but I think there's, and we can even, maybe part of it is asking them for funds to support this, but we need to figure out a way that we don't have people who are essentially sleeping on park benches or camping out that do have resources in other places that we can help them access. Any questions on that? Okay, so with that, I'll ask the committee, I'll ask the board to refer to the Finance Committee, funds for homeless return to resources and supports.
I'll second it.
We need someone to move it.
Oh, I'll move it.
All right, so we have a motion to refer, do you want to repeat what the-
Yeah, it's absolutely. Funding homeless return to resources supports.
Funding homeless return to resources support to the Finance Committee, it's been seconded, discussion or debate?
Just discussion. And I, I don't want a debate, and I don't expect you, oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Davis.
No, I'll wait, I'm sorry.
You can go first.
For the state, when you have the discussion, there needs to be a discussion about if the person is appropriate, and what I mean is maybe not having some mental health issues that prohibit them from functioning, how to get a job, how to be self-supported, you know, how to, how to do these kind of things. And there needs to be some wraparound services for these folks to, to kind of plant their feet, whether it's here or back in Montana, you know, to be successful and not experience this again, if able.
I'll be happy to pass that message along, both to the task force that's putting together the, kind of the, what the program's going to look like moving forward, and to Chris and Megan, who are our representatives on that task force through VLCT. So yeah, we'll pass that message along.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion or debate on the referral? Alderman Gillum.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of this, but for discussion, if we can get this to committee and we talk about this thoroughly, I'm all in favor of doing that.
Go ahead.
I'm a firm believer that, you know, the neighborhoods are hemorrhaging now, and just to keep them here and just hang out is not a solution. I think, and with Alderman Davis, we need to figure out a wraparound so we solve the problem for the long term and not the short term anymore. So I'll, I'll vote for it, to get it to committee, and we'll talk about it.
All right, to reiterate, we have a request to refer funding homeless return to resources community to the Finance Committee. It's been seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I counted six. Do others? All right, all of those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I do want to just send out a quick PSA to those property owners that do have vacant properties or empty properties. If they are not properly boarded up, there is a very good chance that you will find people living on your property with, or with or without your permission, probably without in those scenarios. So we are going to be sending out some notices, if you want to get them, they'll be at our Building and Zoning Department by the end of the week, about some of the things that you can do to properly secure your business, or, sorry, properly secure your property in the event that you don't want squatters in. By the way, just from a public safety, health, and just human safety standpoint, squatters in a building are not a good thing, right? We want to know where people are so that we can give them the services that they need. We don't want people hiding in structures that aren't, that aren't well safe and protected. Makes sense? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of special event permit requests. We have none. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, first up, we have Ed Boe from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request to approve a special benefits district revolving loan fund application. You can find supporting documents on pages one to two of your packet. Welcome.
Hello, thank you for having us. Following up on what the mayor was saying about housing, we're really excited that the IRA Board has recommended for approval a special benefits district RLF for 24 Whale Street, which is Claire Purcell's development. And this came after a SPD RLF committee recommendation, which includes DRP staff, IRA staff, and the city treasurer. So it's been vetted a few times, and information is in the memo, but I will turn it over to Claire to maybe say a few things about the project and answer any questions.
Hi, I'm Claire Purcell. My husband, Luke Purcell, grew up in Rutland. We came back after we met in Australia and are raising a family here, just behind his parents. We love Rutland and come it and consider it out downtown, and so we've started this project as trying to contribute to the revitalization of Rutland and solve some of the housing crisis. I'm excited about the top level of 24 Whale Street, moving from commercial offices to residential, because we're going to be able to make them ADA adaptable. So it's seven units that will have light, bright, you know, welcoming but modern facilities, and they'll be able to be shifted to ADA adaptable for serving those, those people who maybe want to move out of some of these bigger houses that we have in the Rutland County area, wanting to downsize and potentially age-in-place, with access to all of the amazing amenities and things that are in the city. But also, you know, attractive to younger people and young professionals if, in, in keeping that diversity in the downtown area, creating shoppers, you know, people in the area to go to the restaurants and all of that. So, yeah, we're excited about, it's only seven, but it's someplace to start, and we applied for the $30,000 RLF. That will go some way to helping make the, the finances work out on it. So thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Toddia.
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to approve the application for the special benefits district revolving loan fund for $30,000 for 24 Whale Street.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded, any discussion? Alderman McCann.
Next, can you tell me what your next steps are and what this $30,000 is going toward?
Yeah, so the next steps is getting permits. So we are working with the state and the city on all of the different permits and lining up all the different contractors, and then demoing and getting started. So the $30,000 will go to the down payments for the contractors to get them locked in, hopefully over the winter, so early next year. I don't like to give dates, because who knows these days, but yeah. As soon as possible, getting them online early next year.
Nice, thank you.
Any additional discussion or debate? So we have a motion to, Alderman Gillum?
I just, I just want to tell people at home, this is the building where Domino's used to be, am I correct?
That's right, yeah.
And you're going to be doing the development upstairs and downstairs?
No, the downstairs is separate owners. Yeah, so the upstairs will now become residential, and the downstairs is going to remain commercial. Anna's Empanadas is taking over where Domino's is, so it's going to have fresh juices and, you know, baked goods. And then we'll see what happens with the restaurant. Hopefully, someone wants to start another restaurant in, in Rutland, because it's a beautiful, beautiful spot.
All right, so motion to approve is on the floor, any additional discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Administrator Strinasty with a number of items related to road naming and addressing in the city. You can find a memo and supporting documents on pages three to 12 of your packet.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about E911. It's largely been a topic that's been put lower on the priority scale, just due to a lack of resources to attend to it, unfortunately, which, you know, E911 is important, but I think you'll find in most communities, it's kind of put, put aside based on when you can get to it. So fortunately, with Luke, who is over here, he has come on board and has been denoted the E911 coordinator, yeah, with the, so he works directly with the state on getting guidance for addressing. So I'm going to split this up into two different topics here. We have renaming requests, and then I'll talk about some of the issues that we've seen in the city, as well as policies and procedures. So the first one, there really isn't a, a sound policy for E911 and going about addressing, and it's been quite some time since we've had a road name change. We did have a, a road name assignment, Community Drive, where the rec center is, that was back in 2021. That's been the last road name assignment or change beforehand. I actually have no idea, it's been a while, since the city's street network is largely established. But there does come time to time where we do need to assign street names. The Board of Alderman is the one with the authority to assign names. So what will typically happen is the E911 coordinator will come to you with three different road names, with the preferable one being the first choice, which we'll get to in a second. And so, and then the board gets to decide if they want to approve that. In this case, we're going to be looking at Brookside Manor Mobile Park today. That's down off of Mossy Street between Allen and Curtis. That actually has not been a formally adopted name, so it's just kind of hanging out there. Everyone calls it, calls it that, but it's, yeah, not adopted. So we have running, run into a bunch of addressing issues with this particular drive. When we get to the second part, all the numbers are, evens and odds are all on the same side of the street, which is not your normal number in convention. So we have targeted this particular drive to reassign the address numbers, but at the same time, since we're here, we want to actually formally adopt a road name and give it a private road name. So we are presenting three different street names. Brookside Park is our preferred one, which we have talked to the landowner. He has acknowledged that he'd like this particular name. We have also coordinated that with the state's E911, I don't know if he's an officer or coordinator, but whoever is in that title. And then our other two is Brookside Manor and Brookside Avenue. So that is item number one.
So I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to change the name from Brookside Mobile Home Park to Brookside Park.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to change the name or adopt the name Brookside Park for the street. Did you want to include that bit of language in there about the manner consistent with E911?
Yeah, that would be helpful. There's a little bit of lag time in terms of lining up everything with the state, so if you put that contingency in, it kind of gives us a little bit more-
I accept that.
Does the seconder accept?
Okay.
Very good. All right, any discussion or debate? Alderman Heck.
Andrew, the Board of Highway Commissioners, when it comes to naming versus renaming, I thought the Board of Highway Commissioners were the dictating authority in regards to, they were the only entity that could name streets specific.
Yeah, that was my initial inclination as well, and I actually went to Megan with this topic, and we actually reached out to Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher, and they did a pretty significant deep dive into state statute and what our charter and ordinances say. And they did come up with the conclusion that, at the end of the day, the legislative body for the municipality owns the authority to name the streets.
Any additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we have a motion to adopt the name Brookside Park in a manner consistent and recommended by the state's Enhanced 911 Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So the next item, I want to discuss kind of two items here, are the E911 issues that Rutland City is presented with, as well as coming up with a policy and procedure. Right now, there's really no policy and procedure for addressing. It would be good to kind of memorialize that, especially when new addresses are assigned. One of the issues, which we've actually reached out to regional ambulance, the fire department, police department, one of the issue, common issues we hear is, we can't see where the house numbers are. So in Nor- in other municipalities, you'll probably be familiar with those green reflective signs, it would be good to start making that a requirement for new addresses. You know, it just makes it very easy. I know the neighborhood I'm in, you know, I'll be going down the street and you see the actually script spelled out of the number, which makes it very difficult for E911 services to respond to. So that would be one thing I would want to put in policy or in ordinance, whatever the boards would prefer, but that can be a larger discussion at the committee level. And, you know, anytime there's a new address assigned, having a green placard that's readily and easily available, something- and easily available, so I would recommend, you know, having this topic discussed at the committee level.
Alderwoman McClure?
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
I think his request was for a referral, right? Because we don't need a motion to suspend the rules.
In that case, I make a motion to refer the matter of the development of a street naming and street addressing policy or ordinance to Charter and Ordinance.
Do we have a second? All right, so we have a motion to refer this matter to the Charter and Ordinance Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderman McCann.
So if there's the potential for it to be a policy rather than necessarily locked into ordinance, do you think that would have the same teeth if we did that? And then the follow-up question being, would it be more appropriate to go to public safety if it's going to, you know, involve fire and police and all that? So that was a question, two questions, I think, to Attorney.
For the policy, there's probably going to be less teeth when it comes to mandating your green placards. So if that's in ordinance, and maybe it's a combination of both, where, you know, new addressing, you have to get a placard, maybe that's the only thing we do with ordinances. But from, you know, I think either or, you could probably get by with what we need. Policy, you know, gives us a little bit more flexibility, right, since it's just a policy. In regards to public safety, I would probably defer to the board. I'm not, I don't often go with, go to public safety side, defer to your guys' expertise.
If I may, I'll take the issue gladly. We can, we can certainly refer if we think an ordinance is needed to Charter and Ordinance to just simply do the ordinance, but the discussion can certainly live in public safety, and that'll take one off of your plate.
Does the maker of the motion okay with that change?
I'll amend that motion. Does the secondor amend?
Sure.
All right, so now we have a motion to refer this matter to the Public Safety Committee. It's been seconded. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, last topic is going to be the more controversial and polarizing topic. So I would recommend that we refer to committee the exploration of readdressing the city. That is a huge topic, not one that I'm presenting lightly. I know it is going to cause a lot of heartburn, but I do think it demands a conversation. There, and I presented some examples in the packet for you to see. There are some major addressing issues that are in Rutland City, and there are issues that conflict between Rutland City, Rutland Town. Examples include, there's a post-street and a post-road, both in separate towns. It creates, you know, it can create a nightmare for our emergency services, because they are responding to two different locations. You also have, and I tried to articulate this the best I could, with Stratton Road. Stratton Road actually counts up as you go south in Rutland City, and it counts up as you go north in Rutland Town, and it converges in the 400s, right on the town border. And it is, you have like 311 in Rutland Town, when you logically would make more sense to be in Rutland City. So, you know, it's getting that consistency correct. And then last big example was Campbell Road, where you have two digits, you know, 1 through 50 in Rutland City, and you have three, four-digit numbers in Rutland Town that are like 1,200, all on the same road, right across the road from one another. It's, it can be maddening, and I think it's something that our emergency services could potentially have heartburn over. So, and then you also have other examples, Seaberry Street, the first example I provided, you have even and odds on the first, on both sides of the street. You also end up having, you know, eight and nine on the south side of Seaberry Street are actually before essentially seven. So, you know, those are the examples that also create issues. It's not intuitive, especially for our emergency services. I largely hang on them, but you also have other services, such as food deliveries, packages, as, and so on and so forth. So, and then, as we look towards adding more housing, we are going to need, you know, we're going to need to address these new structures, especially if there is any detached accessory dwelling units or anything like that. And on some of these roads, we have run out of numbers, and so you will see that, you know, two buildings will be assigned to the same number, and that's not really how it should work. So for that, I present to the board this topic.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, given the size of this and the potential for it to be controversial, and, you know, the potential need to coordinate with our neighbor, neighboring towns, I'd make a motion to refer this to the committee, the whole, for exploration of readdressing the entire city.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this matter to committee of the whole. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
I can add a few things. So what will be great is that the city does not have to go about this alone for readdressing. So if the board should move ahead, the state will really help do the legwork on helping with the readdressing. So they just did it in Springfield, which was a major endeavor over there, and they essentially will flag all of the inconsistencies, all of the issues in the city, and they will present it to the city, and at that point, you guys can go through and see what those issues are.
All right. Any discussion on the referral of this matter to committee of the whole from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Engineer Gillen with two requests to install underground conduit. Were these emailed?
Yeah.
Yeah, and these were emailed to board members.
Thank you. So one request is from Eustace Cable. They want to install a couple conduits at 151 West Street, so they can provide fiber optics to the federal building. So we've had some lengthy discussions, since that's within the paving limits for V-Trans, and so I guess I'm just looking for a motion to approve Eustace Cable Enterprises' request to install buried conduit near 151 West Street.
Alderwoman Tardio?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to approve Eustace Cable Enterprises' request to install the buried conduit near 151 West Street.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the request. It's been seconded. Alderman Gillum?
You need to add that second piece in there, too. Standard conditions.
With a seven, eight, nine.
I think it's 10, isn't it? Is it 10? Yes, it's 10 standard.
Yeah, we're up to 10.
13.
Is it 13 now?
Yeah.
Okay. You see that motion underneath the other one there? Should add that in your, tail end of your motion.
I don't know what you're talking about, sorry.
I am also lost.
Alderman Gillum?
Hold under the discussion.
It's under discussion.
Just including the standard conditions.
Standard conditions, installing buried lines.
You want that as part of the motion?
Sure.
I will amend the motion to include the standard conditions for the installation of buried conduits and wiring within accepted city street.
Okay. Is that agreeable to you, Engineer Gillen?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion to approve, along with the standard conditions for the installation of buried conduits and wiring within accepted city street. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the second?
The second one, consolidated communications through stone underground construction. They want to install through hydraulic boring underneath Wendy Lane to get a conduit over to number three for fithium service.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of stone underground construction to install buried conduit at number three, Wendy Lane, with the standard conditions.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve with standard conditions. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have Attorney Le Chance with a request related to the city's legal records retention schedule.
Yes, so this is probably not the most urgent thing on the list. However, we are slowly but surely running out of storage space and vault space for some of the city's records. A lot of that is old legal records from cases that have long since been resolved. Outside of a handful exceptions, there is no actual retention schedule beyond that. However, attorneys are required to hand over their records and their case files to their client. In this case, that is the city, and you are the client, so it is really up to the board of how long they would like to retain these files, and if they would like to develop any sort of retention schedule. It's not the most urgent task on the list, I do realize that. However, just be mindful of the space that we do have. The clerk's office also is running out of storage space, will eventually, and their vault for that as well. These are records for cases that have long since been resolved, you know, over 50 years ago or more. So just, I can't get rid of these files without your permission, so I was just looking for some guidance from all of you, if there is any sort of retention schedule you'd be interested in considering.
All right, Alderman McCann, Alderwoman Davis, and then Alderman Adams.
So I'd make a motion to refer to the general committee discussion of a retention schedule and filing the city attorney and the city clerk's office.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this matter to the general committee. It's been seconded. I'll move on to Alderwoman Davis.
Just a question. Is there a timeframe that you're obligated to hold on to legal records, like medical records, there's a certain amount of time? Is there a certain amount of time for legal records?
There are certain amounts of time for legal records under certain circumstances, but in this case, I'm specifically asking about files where it has been closed, the matter is fully resolved.
So they could just all go, so to speak?
Correct.
Alderman Adams?
I'm just feeling like if that's the case, why don't we suspend the rules and just authorize the attorney to do so, rather than have the same discussion in committee?
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that, but it might be worth setting up a retention schedule, so that the next time this happens, so we might be able to do both tonight.
Alderman Heck?
And no, under normal circumstances, within the clerk's office, they go by state statute in regards to the requirements, so I would just utilize that as a guideline, saying whatever state statute says for whichever documents, that we just follow those guidelines that have been established by the state. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. The motion on the floor right now is the referral. Do we wish to vote on, do you want to keep that motion on the floor and vote on that motion?
I do, but I was going to ask another question.
Alderman Heck?
Is there a need or a possibility of digitizing the records, or is it, is that just kind of extra, not necessary?
So I wouldn't say it's not, it's impossible, and for clarification purposes, I wasn't intending that the clerk's records be considered part of that. As Alderman Heck pointed out, there is a specific retention schedule for a lot of the clerk-specific records. These are about attorney-specific records, which don't, there is no official state schedule. It is when the file is closed, it goes to the client. At that point, you can do whatever you want with it. So that was the only thing I was bringing up for discussion on that.
Let's just deal with that issue here.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of a retention schedule for the city's legal records to the general committee. It has been seconded. Any discussion additionally on that referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Alderman McCann?
And then I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up of the specific documents that could potentially be disposed of tonight.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I'd make a motion to authorize the city attorney to dispose of any of the legal documents that have been fully closed and are otherwise, you know, up for disposal to be disposed in whatever the appropriate way would be.
Shredding, whatever it may be.
Second.
So if I could sum that up, I think you made a motion to allow the city attorney to dispose of any records for matters which are completely closed. Something along those lines?
Yes.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on that? Alderman Gillum?
Just a question. How do you do that? Do you shred them, or bring a company in to shred them, or how do you do that?
Typically, they would be done shredding. I know the city has a contract with Secure Shred.
Oh, we do, okay. So it's already in your budget? Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Moving on to reports of standing committees, we, first we have Alderwoman Tardio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Meeting of August 8th. This is on page 13.
The topic was the Real Rutland Marketing Initiative. Committee members present were Alderwoman Davis, Alderman McCann, Alderman Whitcomb over the phone. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Barbagallo, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Adams, Lyle Jepson, and Olivia Lyons-Buxbaum from Cedar, Ed Bove, and Gordon Druchillo. The meeting was called to order at 5:31 PM. The topic was Cedar's Real Rutland Marketing Initiative. Lyle and Olivia from Cedar presented on the program. The Real Rutland Marketing Initiative was launched in 2017 with the goal to attract new residents and encourage current residents to stay. With a larger population, Rutland City can lower individual tax rates. The program has successfully relocated 270 individuals to Rutland County. There are 30 concierge volunteers who the program connects with people who are interested in moving to the area from out of state to answer questions and talk about what it's really like to live in Rutland. The program also chooses five families for an all-inclusive weekend retreat in Vermont to see potential employers, schools, activities, and connect with realtors. The program operates on a budget of $120,000, half of which goes to staff salaries, the other half, or the other portion is for advertising to prospective participants in the program and weekend getaways that bring potential residents into Rutland County. 70% of the budget for the program is corporate sponsorship, and the other is from local cities and towns in Rutland County. Cedar has received a GROW grant to additionally fund the program. Lyle Jepson asked for a commitment from Rutland City for $16,000 or $1 per person in Rutland to sponsor the program, and pointed out that Killington contributed $6,000, which is actually more than a dollar per person of its town's population. Alderman McCann said that he had used the concierge service when he was moving here and had found it helpful. There was some discussion of where the money should come from. In years past, it was pulled from the mayor's contingency budget. Mayor Dungus said he would support that for this year, but he believes it would be great to have a line item in the budget specifically for marketing in the future. Alderman McCann made a motion to support Cedar's Real Rutland Marketing Initiative and Concierge Service in the amount of $16,000 coming from the mayor's contingency funds. This motion passed 4 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to fund from the mayor's contingency fund. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gillum?
I just want to make a comment where a lot of people say, well, we're spending money again. I think this is good money we're spending. It is a dollar per person. We're also in with the other towns who are doing a dollar per person. We also have corporate sponsors involved with this. There's no way in hell that we can afford a marketing person in the city of Rutland for $16,000. So this is a real good deal for the city. We have somebody out there marketing Rutland City and the county, and I think this is where we need to go and work together.
Alderman McCann?
Thank you, and I just want to clarify, so as Alderwoman Tardio said, I did use the concierge service, but in doing that, it was just gaining information from the website that they provided, and then getting connected with volunteers who helped inform me about things around town, and then helped introduce me to some people. I know the program does include some of the stay-to-stay sorts of things, where they put people up in hotels, and they take them around, and they feed them, and they, they, there's a financial kind of contribution, and that was not part of what I got to take advantage of, so I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a concern about conflict of interest there in voting on this tonight.
Very good. Any additional discussion or debate on the motion to fund from the mayor's contingency fund, the Real Rutland Marketing Initiative? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:14 PM.
Thank you. Next, we have Alderwoman Davis with a report from the Public Safety Committee Meeting of August 14th. This was emailed.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee met August 14th. Members present were Alderwoman Tadio, McClure, Alderman Gillum, and Chairman Davis. Also present were President Talbot, Alderman Barbergalo, Chief Lovett, Chief Kilkellin, Treasurer Markowski. The meeting began at 5:30 PM, and the topic was fire ladder seven financing options. The fire chief gave background information regarding this truck, which required replacement in 2022. The discussion was to refurbish, rebuild, and not replace, due projected cost of $1.7 million and await possibly up to seven years. The Public Safety Committee had approved a dollar amount previously from the fire equipment fund of $200,000, with the rest to come from a lease agreement. The lease was not initiated due to the high interest rates and the length of time of having to wait for the truck. During that time period, the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund was able to mature and have enough funds at this time to purchase outright, saving the taxpayers over $80,000 in interest costs. Due to the replacement schedule for this fund, it should have no negative impact on the fund. The fund is generating currently $175,000 yearly off the tax rate. Alderwoman McClure made the motion to approve the use of the fire equipment fund for the direct purchase, excuse me, of the refurbished ladder seven for an amount up to $864,000, and I so move. The truck will be ready in late September.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Any discussion?
And just to state that the attached paperwork are the fire equipment fund, the replacement schedule, and we are ways out to having to replace anything expensive, I believe it was 2039, and the current cost of rebuilding, rebuilding ladder seven. So those are information only.
All right, any discussion on the motion to approve the $864,000 for ladder seven? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And we adjourned at 5:45 PM.
Moving on, reports of select committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have Alderman McCann with an update from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. The Rutland City Planning Commission is nearing the completion of its zoning bylaws revision. This has been a lengthy but critical process. These bylaws establish clear guidelines for building and development, ensuring the city grows in alignment with aesthetic and economic goals. The Planning Commission's experienced volunteers with diverse backgrounds have dedicated many, many hours to carefully reviewing and refining the proposed updates, mindful of their potential impacts. For example, in a recent meeting, the commission deliberated for nearly an hour on how a green space requirement might limit multifamily housing development. They weighed this against maximum lot coverage and balcony space requirements, considering quality of life issues for residents without outdoor areas. The commission discussed whether green space requirements should vary by zoning designation, how proximity to city-maintained parks might factor in, and whether rooftop or private balcony spaces could count towards the green space requirement. They also explored how to maintain flexibility in these requirements to allow for creative solutions and market-driven decisions. After resolving the issue, they moved on to discuss with similar depth of detail when a stationary food truck might fall under zoning bylaws, ensuring they weren't creating a loophole that would allow for unpermitted restaurants. This is just a reminder to the board that now is the time to provide input on the upcoming zoning bylaw updates, if they're interested. Board members interested in understanding the proposed bylaws, their impact on development scenarios, or existing properties should attend one of the upcoming Planning Commission meetings on August 28th, September 11th, or September 25th. The Planning Commission aims to present the draft final zoning bylaws later this year. Given the extensive work already completed, asking the commission to revisit their decisions at that stage would be inefficient. It's important to remember that the bylaws can be updated, improved, and improved over time to adapt to changing needs. When the Planning Commission presents its final recommendations, I encourage the board to trust in the diligent efforts and good faith of the commission members over the past several years. And I believe zoning administrator Stanis is here, and I'd like to kick it to him for a little bit more clarity on what that timeline looks like.
Sure.
Hello again. So as Alderman McCann was saying, we are entering the final stages of our update, and it's probably going to be here during an inconvenient time budget season. So what happens is the Planning Commission will hold two, maybe three hearings on the proposed changes, potentially more if we get a high turnout, and we will be soliciting feedback from the general public. It's really at that stage where we want to receive all of our comments, because the Planning Commission can make changes relatively easy. You know, if they end up making major changes, then they'll go back and have to rewarn. But generally, we want to get all of our public comment during that phase, because once the Planning Commission is done, they have 120 days, or they'll forward it to the Board of Aldermen, and at that point, you'll have 120 days to adopt it, or otherwise, we have to restart the process, and the Planning Commission would have to hold public hearings again. So any major changes at the Board of Aldermen level could potentially threaten that 120-day period to adopt the regulations. So, you know, I think if we were to transmit to the Board of Aldermen the recommend, or the proposed bylaws in November, you would essentially have until end of February, early March to approve the regulations, and there's just a lot going on in that time period. So, you know, now would be the time to really provide any feedback. I'm happy to meet with anyone. You know, if you have any questions, would like to see a draft, I'm hoping to prepare something by the end of this week for the chair of the Planning Commission on what we have left, and then my goal will be to give a summary of what's changing, how this looks different from what we have today versus what we will have. As Alderman McCann said, a lot of thought has gone into this. You wouldn't believe some of the 30-minute, 60-minute conversations we've had over something as minute as the front building, the face of the building, the front building line. So, and it really is, if you pull one lever, it opens up like a trapdoor somewhere else. So, you know, I'm happy to meet with anyone to go over them.
So I guess I'll ask Andrew if and when you develop that changes, if you could forward those to the board as well.
Yeah.
I think that gives us an opportunity to see what's changed.
Yeah.
And allow us to have any concerns addressed before it comes to us formally.
Yeah, absolutely, and I will say, it will be a significant change. It's going to be a lot different from what we have today. You know, I know change can sound scary. There are going to be planning principles that are in this zoning regulation, but there has been a lot of thought given to making sure that we're not obstructing businesses that want to come to the community, as well as inhibiting housing and everything, all the other initiatives that the city is taking. So it will be a little bit more robust, but it will be for the betterment of the community.
Good.
And that report was for information only, and that's the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have one item on the agenda, an application for indoor cultivation tier two. There's a copy of the application on pages 14 to 15 of your packet, and I'd entertain a motion to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What is the Board of Cannabis Commissioners' pleasure? Alderwoman Tadio?
I will move to approve the application for licensure for indoor cultivation tier two for nature's gifts, gift alternatives at 209 Columbia Ave, Rutland, Vermont.
Alderwoman McClure?
I was just wondering if the individual...
Is there a second on that motion to approve? Okay, I guess there's...
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
I was just wondering if the individual for this permit was present tonight and was able to speak on it?
I asked them to come. Is Eric here? Nope.
Does not appear that anyone is here to speak to the permit application. Alderman, did you have more, Alderwoman McClure?
I did. I just would like to make a point to describe the neighborhood in which this is proposed. I just would like to make folks aware that this is relatively close to both a correctional facility and a school. Just wanted to make sure. That's why I was wondering if the applicant was here, is if there was a chance to have a conversation on their plans on integration into the neighborhood and safety, but other than that, no, I have no further questions.
All right, Alderman Gillum?
I have some concerns. This is touching a neighborhood, and we're having a major housing development proposed across the street from this project. And it says gifts, but I'm not sure exactly what they're selling there, so we need some more information before I put my vote to this.
I don't believe they're applying for a retail permit, only a cultivation, that they wouldn't be selling anything.
So they're manufacturing.
I believe so. That's my understanding. All right?
I have a problem.
Any additional discussion or debate on the motion to approve? Seeing none, Alderman McCann?
Sorry, I'm looking, was there, I think there's a difference between just cultivation and then manufacturing, right? So they're, if they're just growing the plant as opposed of turning it into consumables or something, and then they're selling it. So there's like three parts, and I don't know if this is just the first or the first and the second.
Alderwoman McClure?
Just to speak to that, there is a difference between cultivation and manufacturing. From the sounds of it, it sounds like they are looking for cultivation, which is to just grow the plant, and from previous permits that have come before us, manufacturing is anything that involves anything more than dirt and lights.
All right, is there any further discussion or debate before we vote? Alderman Gillum?
I'm still having a problem with this, because I don't think the neighbors know this is coming, and I don't want to get into another issue with the neighbors. That is a heavy residential area on the backside of that, plus there's a new development going across the street for housing, and that, like she said, there's a school down the street. So I think we really need to put this on, on hold until we talk to the permit person.
To the board.
Applicant.
Development Review Board on there was...
I'm looking at the map right now on, on the internet here, and it's plopped right in the middle of the neighborhood.
Okay, they did go, I believe, before the Development Review Board a few months ago, so there was an opportunity. No? Is that not correct?
I thought that's what it says.
That's what.
So 209 Columbia Ave did get a zoning permit for indoor cultivation. I'm not too savvy with the cannabis regulations, but I do know the level one cultivation is what we've been seeing at 82 East Washington Street, which is 1,000 square feet all inside, versus the tier two, I imagine, is probably larger than that. I think there's a third tier as well, so smaller than the biggest one, but still bigger than what we've seen in the past. But they did get a zoning permit, they just didn't need to go in front of the Development Review Board.
All right, Alderman McCann?
So I think we've got some number of days to review this after it comes to us as an application. I'm wondering if the city attorney could clarify what, what the timeline would be if we did want to look at it more closely?
I will admit, I do not have that timeline handy off the top of my head right here, but there is a certain amount of time. We could certainly put it on for the next meeting and be within the timeline. That I'm comfortable with, without needing to review the schedule.
Okay.
And if I may, I think this is why the issue got referred charter and ordinance with the recommendation from, from Andrew and the city attorney to start addressing what we do and don't want to see within residential neighborhoods, and I encourage that we have that meeting sooner rather than later, because these are going to become more frequent than not.
We still have a motion to approve on the floor. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion or debate on that motion? Alderman Gillum?
Just want to make one more comment. We, we have the same issue with liquor. We don't allow liquor in the neighborhood, near the neighborhoods, so it should be handled the same way, and I think we need to step back and look at this strongly before we approve this.
All right, the motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion fails. I would entertain a motion to go out of Board of Cannabis Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Seeing none? Do board members have any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderwoman Davis?
So in the Public Safety Committee, Chief Kilkellin brought up the fact that they also have a dollar amount on the tax rate that's generated every year off the tax rate based off the grant list as well, and it certainly isn't funding the needed equipment necessary for police, but that fund also is separated with recreation, I think, are they still separating with recreation? Okay, I think DPW pulled out, but pardon?
Is police DPW...
So DPW is still in. So I'd like to refer to Public Safety to have the discussion of the tax rate amount that currently is being raised by taxes for the equipment replacement fund.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to the Public Safety Committee, a discussion of the dollar amount on the tax rate for the police equipment replacement fund. It's been seconded. Alderwoman McClure, and then Alderman Heck?
I, I just have a question. I wonder if it would be more fitting to see this referral go to the Finance Committee, since it's a matter of dollars and the tax rate versus Public Safety? That way, if there is any determined changes that may need to be made or considered, it's already in finance and doesn't have to bounce between more than one?
Alderman Heck was up next.
I'll defer to Alderwoman Davis.
I'll just say, we don't have to bounce between Finance and Public Safety. This is an equipment replacement fund that funds Public Safety. Partially, the rest was the fire equipment fund, which funded, obviously, the fire department, rolling stock, and others. So we don't have to refer back to Finance. The Public Safety Committee can make that recommendation.
Alderman Heck, are you good?
I'm good.
Anything additional on this referral to Public Safety? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman Gillum?
Yes, it's come to my attention that we're having an issue on Harrington Avenue again with Sherwood Williams facility on Woodstock Avenue with a tractor-trailer going on people's front lawn, which is also the city right-of-way green space is being damaged. So I would like to refer this to the Traffic Committee and the Zoning Administrator to be sure that the zoning permit that they have, they're complying with, and we are getting our money back for damages done to the city property.
Okay.
So it's going to two places.
Gotcha. A referral to the Traffic Safety Committee and a referral to the Zoning Administrator?
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion or debate on those referrals? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Seeing none, we have an executive session. Attorney Le Chance, if you would read the motions?
Yes, so this is an executive session dealing with pending litigation we have going on, so I would entertain at this time a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation to which the city is a party would clearly place the city as substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such pending litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to go into executive session. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, clerk, and city attorney to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1E, and Title I, Section 313A1F.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.